I'd like to call the order of the City of Cannon Falls Planning Commission Meeting for June 8th. Call the order. Roll call. Daniels.
Bill Duncan.
Here.
Bruce Hemma, here. Derek Lundell.
Here.
Glenn Lundell.
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda, but I'd like to swap letters A and B around.
Now I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion, movement, or that passes. Okay, approval of the minutes for December 9th. Probably all have had a chance to look at those. That was last year.
Yes, it was.
2019. Anyone want to move to approve those?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Second. Derek moves it and Glenn seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Movement, approval passes for the minutes. Okay, we'll now have public input. Little information here, citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Please approach the microphone and before speaking, give your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Does anyone have anything that's not on the agenda they'd like us to add? Nope. Okay, we'll move to number six, public hearings. We're going to switch these around. We're going to go to the conditional use permit for John Anderson at 201 Main Street West to allow a height variation of a proposed accessory structure to be construction, constructed on his property. Do you have any information on that other than what we've gotten so far? John wants to speak.
Hello?
I see you way back there.
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
How is it in there? It's pretty nice out here. You tell me, what, what would you like? You reviewed the packet?
Yeah, I got the packet and what is the, let's see, what's the variation that is going to happen here?
Well, if you, if you know the property, it was in the 40s. The lot was split and at one time, there was a carriage house in the back. And that's kind of the look that I'm going to try and go for in terms of a garage. So I have to be kind of creative and to accommodate for the back lot line and the west lot line. And at the same time, I don't, don't want to use up the whole green space. So as I said in the, in the narrative, I want to put the garage in, go all the way back to the west. Stay in five feet from the lot line on the west side and on the south side. I would approach the, the, the garage apron would be in the southeast corner, coming in off the alley and, and in that corner. And the other thing that I plan to do is, is bring in Phil so that I can have a back around and I can drive out face first instead of backing out into the alley.
Anybody have anything? It's going to be higher than usual, right?
Right.
How much above the normal height will it be?
The normal height is, I think it's 18 feet, if I remember right. It would be about 24 feet. So regular sidewall of eight foot and then a four foot above that and then the peak starts.
And you don't plan on doing any residential use on it?
No, just cold storage.
Cold storage and attic?
Drop down stairway, you know, pretty simple.
Are there any neighbors here or anyone else that?
Anybody want to?
You know, I, I've spoken with most of them. I don't see any neighbors here.
Oh, I, I talked to one of your neighbors, she's okay with it. So you, you've, you're not going to be blocking anyone's view of anything, you know?
You know.
Not enough to make a difference?
I, it's going to stick out a little bit.
Yeah.
But not greatly so. I, you know, I want to be mindful of that. You don't want to be sitting way out there in front, you know?
Gotcha. Okay, we have any comment on this? Any discussion?
No, I think it's fine.
Yeah, seems like he's being mindful of the neighbors and all that.
Anybody want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for Mr. Anderson.
Okay, the motion to approve has been made by Mr. Duncan. Second?
I'll second it.
And seconded by Mr. Lundell. We're all done.
Thank you.
Well, we got to vote first.
We got to vote.
Oh, we got to vote, I forgot. I always forget to vote, don't I? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
We're all done.
Thanks, John.
Thank you for reminding me. Okay, well now we'll move to the conditional use permit for Valley View Recovery Center, the residential treatment center in the B2 Highway Business District, Cannon Falls. We have a presentation on that?
All right. So I'm going to share my screen.
Okay. And we need your name.
I'm Tori Utley with Valley View Recovery Center and I've, it says I cannot share my screen. I'm going to knock on the door to get some technical support. Is he?
He's working on it.
Yeah, it looks like he's doing something here.
See you. There you go.
So it's still not letting me share the presentation. Okay. All right, can everybody see this? The presentation?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so again, my name is Tori Utley. I am a representative with Valley View Recovery Center, here to share a little bit more about our facility prior to some, some Q and A that we'd like to open up. So this is our proposal to transform the former Saratoga Inn into a residential treatment center in Cannon Falls. So a little bit about us, our mission at Valley View Recovery Center is to offer patients a comprehensive treatment experience that combines medically informed clinical treatment with holistic and healing therapies. At Valley View, our integrated model of care brings together clinical, practical, and holistic treatments for the best possible patient experience and outcome. Put simply, our mission is to offer a holistic treatment experience that allows our clients to find hope and joy in recovery. Something that we are really pushing for at Valley View is to offer an unparalleled patient experience that offers holistic therapies like aquatic therapy, equine therapy, really creating a high-class experience for residents of our program. So we would be a high-intensity residential treatment facility in Cannon Falls. We would offer gender-specific treatment to 54 men and women recovering from substance use disorder. So a little bit more about a high-intensity residential facility. There are low, medium, and high-intensity facilities. Really what that means, what it comes down to is the hours of programming and some of the services that we provide. So as a high-intensity residential facility, we would offer 30 hours of group therapy and counseling per week. We would have 24/7 on staff, or onsite staff. And then again, our facility would really push for that high-class service that would set our program apart from others in surrounding communities. And right now, no residential treatment center exists in all of Goodhue County. So the ability to access treatment would be hugely beneficial for area residents, not only individuals living in Cannon Falls or the neighboring towns, but others maybe coming from the metro or other communities to access treatment. So we would be a licensed facility. We would offer substance use disorder treatment, mental health treatment for men and women 18 and older. So some of the services that we provide include group and individual therapy, family programming. We really want to get families involved in the healing process, health and wellness activities like equine therapy, aquatic therapy, yoga, meditation, cooking classes, parenting classes, health and advocacy, financial literacy education, and then help planning, planning a graduation so a safe and sober lifestyle after somebody completes our program is important for a recovery lifestyle back in the community. So our team, Valley View Recovery Center, was founded by CEO Jacob McGuire. You'll hear from him in just a little bit. He's an entrepreneur and the co-owner of Common Ground Recovery Housing that has been open in Winona County. Once we open our doors, we will grow to employ approximately 30 staff members and the positions that they, that we would employ would range from counselors, social workers, cooks, facility technicians, all across the board. And as a family-owned business, our team would remain committed to both the quality of care within our facility, but a focus on the local community, including economic development, and then improving access to healthcare for community residents. So the space, again, that we're looking at is the former Saratoga Inn. We believe this would offer an accessible, community-centered location for residents to prioritize their health, in addition to a very visible location that would be easy to find for both residents and family members who may be visiting the area. So now I'm going to pass the mic to Jacob McGuire to speak a little bit more about the zoning request.
Tori. Hi, I'm Jacob McGuire. I'd like to thank you again for taking the time to meet with us. I'd like to start out by saying, we understand that this is an important procedure in the process. We did, we reached out to zoning department multiple times in December as the first step for planning this business, then again in January. Each time, we were told the same thing, our use was permitted, even after getting input from the city attorney. The city attorney and zoning said our rehabilitation, quote, "Our rehabilitation center," end quote, "is classified as office clinical." We have an email stating this as well. Immediately after we received the written approval in January, we signed a purchase agreement. The written statement did state, quote, "If you end up moving forward, please stay in contact with us so that we make sure that you still fit within our city ordinance," end quote. We have dealt with zoning in other cities many times and are aware that you are deemed a permitted use, and are aware that if you are deemed a permitted use, you are allowed to open as long as you stay within the parameters of the zoning requirements. We knew that we would be working with building permits to change the use classification and thought that was the same as staying in contact. The building permits went through Goodhue County instead. We're, we are ready to be licensed by Minnesota Department of Health, Minnesota Department of Human Services. We've had cleared about 10 inspections. We have changed the use classification of the property through Goodhue County and Minnesota Department of Labor. We have six-plus months of hard work, dedication, and dedication into this building, this project, and this community. We have a contract with Mayo Clinic in Cannon Falls, a contract with two local mental health facilities. We are in compliance with the zoning requirements and city ordinance for a conditional use permit, which include four points. One, side yards are double the minimum requirements. We pass this. Two, the site shall be served as an, the site shall be served by an arterial or collector street of sufficient capacity to accommodate traffic. There are both collector and arterial roads servicing the property. We're on the frontage road which is directly connected to a roundabout and directly connected to a major highway also. All state statutes and regulations, number three, all state statutes and regulations governing the use are strictly adhered to and all required operating permits are secured. We are ready to be licensed. We have attained building permits and we have passed all site and procedural inspections. Number four, the regulation of off-street parking to accommodate the intensity of our use. We have policies in place that do not permit clients to have vehicles while in treatment at our facility. They are either to be dropped off by a family member or most of the time, we transport clients to and from with our staff medical transporter. We have 65 parking spaces. This well accommodates our staff on the largest shift, plus any visitors that would be there. Mayo Clinic Hospital was permitted also in a B2 zoning. We are, this classification that we are given by the zoning department, we are also a hospital. We have hired a majority of the employees already and most, if not all, have already put in their notice and have ended their employment. We planned on closing on the property June 1st and opening the second week of June until we got a call from the city of Cannon Falls the last week of May stating that our facility is now considered a hospital as a classification. Our employees, whom many are your local citizens, livelihoods, and families depend on this job. Our company pays good livable wages with good benefits. We are a family-owned company that care about the community and our employees. Our business practices are strict and adhered to. We keep the grounds of our facilities in excellent condition and we are very quick to respond if there are any issues that arise. Our employees are trained well, most having a bachelor degree and a few hold master's degree in the field of mental health, addiction, and education. Thank you. Back to Tori.
Thank you.
So I think it's important to share a little bit about our commitment to the community safety as well as our resident safety. It's a high priority within our, within our organization. So a part of this field, all residents admitting to a residential treatment center have to have a chemical use assessment. So through the, our admissions criteria, it would, it would be appropriate for individuals that come into our facility to have been clinically assessed for a service like Valley View Recovery Center. So everyone that would be admitted would follow that process. We don't admit individuals with sex offenses. That's against our admission criteria. Again, we would have 24/7 staffing and supervision. We have a robust interior and exterior security system planned, as well as we have in all of our other facilities. We would have collaborative working relationships with local law enforcement and then would have policies and procedures developed for emergency preparedness and crisis intervention and our staff would be trained in crisis intervention. We've talked about it, but again, our commitment to the community is really first and foremost at Valley View Recovery Center. We want to provide an accessible and convenient location for treatment while making a positive impact on the local community. So again, we're in a family-owned establishment, we would commit to serving the local community first. So a few ways that we are already looking at partnering with the city of Cannon Falls would be to work with vendors like Montcheval Training Center to provide equine therapy for our residents. We're in discussion with Little Oscars for catering, coming in three times per day. We would purchase produce from the Ferndale Market and we would promote tourism in the community for local hotels and restaurants with families visiting our residents. And I want to invite up Andrea Tachi to talk a little bit about what Valley View Recovery Center would mean for Cannon Falls.
Good evening. My husband and I both grew up in Cannon Falls and we recently returned to residing in this lovely community. As a recreational therapist, I've had many professional and personal relationships with people whose lives have been changed because of substance use disorder treatment. Back in March, I accepted my dream job as the care team supervisor of Valley View Recovery Center. The excitement I have and still have for this opportunity to provide these vital services to my community is indescribable. I never thought that there would be an opportunity to provide this type of care in my own community despite the growing need for this type of healthcare service. I've worked in high-intensity residential treatment for almost six years in the Twin Cities area. My greatest fear is that the city of Cannon Falls may be unaware of how significantly addiction affects those in our rural community. Addiction does not discriminate and many people in Cannon Falls and our county are struggling with this disease. There have been countless news stories about rural farmers struggling with mental health as well as suicidal thoughts and attempts due to not having access to appropriate care. Unfortunately, it is very common for people who are struggling to attempt to cope by self-medicating with drugs and alcohol. I hope you recognize that there is a clear lack of resources in our area and you have the wonderful opportunity to change that. In addition to potentially not seeing the full, in addition to potentially not fully understanding the need, I anticipate that a small number of community members may have some reservations or fears due to the stigma of addiction and treatment services. I believe that it's important to note that in all of my time working in high-intensity residential treatment services and in the full duration of the time that the company that I worked for has been operating, not once has the public ever been at any risk. The simple fact is that family and community members are safer when people have access to the treatment services they desperately need. Valley View Recovery Center, like we kind of mentioned, will be staffed 24/7 with trained professionals that know how to provide the care, treatment, and support these clients desperately need. Clients of this program will have very structured days with six hours of programming as well as scheduled meals and medication times and assignments to be completed outside of programming hours. They will not be allowed to go out into the community unsupervised at any time. As the care team supervisor and a member of this community, I intend to take great responsibility for the safety of all clients, staff, and community members in our area. I can assure you that the community members and those who seek our services will be much safer than if the person struggling with addiction was at home or on the streets. Lastly, we cannot ignore the immense benefits that opening a program like this will bring to our local economy. In addition to multiple jobs, it will also draw people to our town. As someone who got onto 52 North and Hampton for my job, I very rarely drove into downtown Cannon Falls. If this conditional use permit is granted, I will be driving to town at least five days a week. As someone who typically purch, purchased gas, groceries, and lunches from businesses close to my old employer, if I'm given the opportunity to work in Cannon Falls, most of my purchases will now be made locally. I'll utilize various gas stations in town, Family Fair, Family Fair in Ferndale Market for groceries, high-quality bakery for baked goods for family and staff, as well as local businesses like pharmacies, chiropractic offices, hardware stores, restaurants, and more, simply due to the convenience. I'm just one person. Think of all of the business that the other employees of Valley View Recovery Center, as well as those that are visiting loved ones in our program, will bring to our economy. Additionally, Valley View Recovery Center intends to support small businesses for a multitude of things, including catering, client prescriptions, medical care, lawn and parking lot maintenance, electrical plumbing services, and more. Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, as Andrea shared, economic impact is something that we are pushing for with 30 jobs provided, outsourced services, staying local whenever possible, promoting local business from our visitors and family members. And then as a quality employer, we believe we will attract great employees to both live and work in Goodhue County. So in closing, our vision is to provide a center that is focused on healing in order to make Cannon Falls a destination setting for health and well-being for residents and their families. We believe that we would provide needed services that would only make our community here better, safer, and healthier in the long run. So with that, we will open it up for discussion.
Thanks, Tori. Anybody have any questions for Tori here?
Want to make comments, Bruce? I don't know if it's your time.
Yeah, yeah, I think public input should be before we discuss.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else have any public input? Thank you.
I'm Dick Peterson, neighboring landowner. If the map was still up there, I own the pine trees just to the west of that property and, and our farm and home is just to the north of there. I'd like to talk about process a little bit. I, I would disagree with Mr. McGuire's contention that everybody knew all about this. Seems like somebody who went through all these steps and all these processes would have surely known you needed a conditional use permit and had to, had to obtain that for a purchase agreement to be signed. I have not heard from anybody in the city that, that those steps were taking place. We as neighboring landowners certainly knew nothing about it until very, very recently. In fact, it was brought to no one's attention until somebody saw Help Wanted ad on Facebook one week before the closing date. To me, that's maybe not a good way to get, you know, get, get off on the right track in a new community. I think, you know, you, you say a lot of good things and I don't disagree that there's a need for, for this service, but I just don't think that this has been presented or handled very well. They've had, once you research, they've had a, you know, website and a lot of things up and running that makes it look like they've been here and ready to go for a long time. I'm kind of, kind of amazed at some of the things they've said in there on ValleyViewRecovery.com. It said it's located on a sprawling campus in Cannon Falls. A hotel and a parking lot really do not appeal to me as a sprawling campus, but it says it's a serene setting and a sprawling campus. It talks about nature trails, which I'm really afraid might be my woods that the tornado kind of destroyed and I'm trying to get it back in shape. But again, just to the west of that property, I don't know where the other nature trails might be. So I have some real concerns about this venture. It looks like on the packet they provided you, they had a lot of support, letters of support from Red Wing. I'm assuming they tried to run this up the pole in Red Wing first and that would be logical. A lot of the clients would come from the county court system, would be part of their parole or part of the sentence or whatever to be in this program. So why wasn't it approved in Red Wing and why did they, why did they suddenly come to Cannon Falls and be very secretive about getting permits for it? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have?
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Erica Peterson. I'm married to John and have an eight-year-old son, Finn, and we live across the road from the proposed Valley View Recovery Center. It goes without saying that our society needs rehabilitation facilities. As a person who has many extended family members who have battled and are currently battling addiction, I'm compassionate toward those who wish to do the hard work of recovery. battling addiction, I'm compassionate toward those who wish to do the hard work of recovery. I believe in second chances and I've seen recovery hold. I've also worked with many students in my vocation as an instructor at Dakota County Technical College in Rosemount who are recovering addicts. So I have a big heart for people with these kinds of struggles. That said, I do not believe that Cannon Falls in general and the Saratoga location specifically is the best place for a facility like this. You've already heard valid experience, valid concerns other have expressed, so I won't repeat Dick's concerns. I want to speak to you tonight as a mother, and I ask for you and the planning commission to step into my shoes just for a minute. You are now the mother living across the street from Valley View Recovery Center, the mother who wants her son to be safe as he turns cartwheels in the yard, as he scoots on his scooter on the paved trails nearby, and runs around willy-nilly with his dog and his many, many friends. New rehab patients without any recovery under their belts are not functioning at their best, especially if it is not their choice to be there. I don't know, maybe we'll get to that in the question and answer part of the discussion, but we saw on the website or we were told that these are often inmates from the county jail. The powerful drive for drugs and alcohol can transform once-upstanding citizens into escapees, breaking into the nearest house, which would be ours, before hopping into the speeding getaway car. Maybe none of this would never happen. That is a completely fair point, but would you want to live with the worry that something could happen someday even if it hadn't yet? Would you be able to accept this diminished sense of safety over the long term? If those questions fail to move you, I will ask this practical economic question. Would you accept the decrease to your property value due to its proximity to a rehab? My hope is that in your decision-making, you as a planning commission can prioritize those who already live here, work here, raise our families here, and who contribute to our safe, vibrant community. Thank you.
My name is Ray Schoenfelder. I own the properties both sides of this proposed adventure here. One of the things I'd like to say first, this is something that seems to me our entire country, as far as the United States is concerned, is that we like to push our problems someplace else, meaning like, I'll give you an example, California loves electricity, but they don't like to have power plants there. What I'm trying to get at is, I own property on both sides of it. My property became devalued when they put the, or took away the intersection. Did anybody say anything about that? No. Is my property going to be devalued anymore? That part I don't know. So what I'm trying to say, guys, is our county absolutely has a problem with drug abuse, alcohol abuse. Do we want to push it to someplace else like California does? We don't want a power plant here. We want, we really want that nice, clean energy, but we don't want that power plant here. I come from a different way of doing something. When there's a need, you fill the need. Absolutely is going to be economic, there's actually going to be social things that the community is going to either embrace it and grow, or it's going to end up just letting it go and we stay the community we are. I've had many vehicles stolen. We've never had a recovery center here. I've had vehicles stolen by drug addicts. I've had stuff broken in in my business. And maybe, not saying it would have changed it all, but maybe with a system like this, maybe we would. I'm a landowner, right, butting both sides of it, and I totally understand the Petersons' concerns, totally. But I'm looking at the thing as a whole, as a Goodhue County, Cannon Falls in particular. There's going to be concerns, but I think we need to bring them up. I think we need to talk about them. I have concerns. I have got concerns about security and all that kind of stuff. But would you rather have the, I've been associated with Teen Challenge before and I don't know if anybody else here has been associated with it. It is basically the same type of a, of a community of, if you want to call them addict, recovering addicts, recovering people that abuse substances. And the amount of people that it turns good compared to the people that are not rehabilitated, the statistics are that we literally are doing the job of trying to get people back to community, making them resourceful in our community. So as much as maybe I don't want that there, I know in my heart, our community, our county really does need something like that, and if this is the place, if it does, if it does, not saying it does right now, but if it does meet the requirements that, as our community is here, that we can make it work, then I think it's a good thing for our county. So what I want to leave with you, and I think Joel, my general manager, is going to maybe address some of the security aspects, but what I really want to leave to you guys, City Council, is are we going to be like everybody else and say, we want this stuff, we want everything to be right, but I want somebody else to take care of it, is what I want to say, so.
My name is Joe Hamburger. I'm the general manager of Cannon Power Sports. I think the biggest issue, and it may or may not be an issue depending on how you're looking at it, is the security aspect. I know we look at the security aspect and we talk about it in a bunch of different ways. We talk about it in terms of property values, we talk about it in terms of, you know, our kids playing outside and stuff like that, which is completely understandable, and I get that. I think a lot of those can be addressed in some security concerns that perhaps just haven't had an opportunity to been answered yet. We have well over a million dollars' worth of inventory that sits at the property right next door. As a general manager, you know, that's our livelihood. That concerns me. However, it doesn't concern me so much so that I'm not willing to listen to what kind of things they have put in place to prevent, you know, that stuff from happening and to protect our businesses. I get cameras and stuff like that, but I think we all understand that it probably needs to be something more than that. But I am more than willing to listen to what they have, listen to the propositions that they bring forth, and get that sense of security. Now granted, the units that I have sitting on my show floor are not children. I get that and I truly get the concerns of the citizens that are wondering what kind of people we're bringing into the community. That being said, I think maybe giving them an opportunity to figure out how they're going to quell some of that within us, I think is probably the right way to go. I've met the owners. I find them to be good, honorable people and I'm willing to give them the opportunity to show me that my concerns are, you know, validated. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Peterson. I promise to be very brief because you've heard from two Petersons already and that's probably one too many. I do want to, however, echo my dad's concerns that he mentioned about the transparency and the process here. It does concern me that as neighbors, we didn't hear about this project until literally a couple of weeks ago, and I'm convinced that we heard about it then only because it was exposed on social media at that point in time. It's striking to me to hear the first item on the agenda, John Anderson, talking about building a garage. John's building a garage and he's already notified all of the neighbors. It sounds like six months went by and we as neighbors heard nothing about this project. So it does concern me that if that corner was cut or if there wasn't that thoughtfulness about the community and the neighborhood on the front end, what other corners may be cut down the road. Secondly, I would really ask you to dig into that Red Wing question. A quick review of their application and letters of support certainly looks like they were petitioning for this project to happen in Red Wing. For some reason, that didn't happen. I think we in Cannon Falls owe it to ourselves to understand why it didn't happen in Red Wing and why it should happen here in Cannon Falls. And then lastly, as somebody who's deeply invested in the south side of Cannon Falls, I live there, I own land there, I own a business there, I wanted to be clear that I am not a reflexively not-in-my-backyard-type individual. In fact, I don't think anybody wants to see the south side of Cannon Falls grow and thrive more than I do. We're here for the long haul, and I would just ask, is this the right project from an economic development standpoint for the south side of Cannon Falls? The city is investing a lot of dollars right now in rehabbing the Cannon Falls site across 52. We know there's other opportunity on the south side. Does this complement what the city is working to achieve on the south side for those of us that are already here? So with that, I thank you for listening to our concerns.
Somebody on?
Babash is the current property owner and I know he wanted to say.
Can he hear us?
Got somebody on the screen for us?
Hello.
There you go.
Yeah, can you hear me? My name is Babash. I'm the owner here at Saratoga Inn. I mean, I've been here 15 years and I've seen my property value go down over the years because of the interchange of the new hotel coming in. Nobody spoke about all that, like the other gentleman said, when that was happening, and this is my chance to sell right now. And my son has just graduated. We stayed 15 years. My son has done schooling here since kindergarten to senior and now graduation. So I have no plan here, no motivation here to run it as a hotel, especially with the business with the COVID-19 and this interchange and everything. I mean, we're in a survival mode here, you know, and I would like to sell this property if I could. And Matia and Jacob McGuire, they've approached me and we, you know, we've gone through all the steps that was necessary. They were, they were thinking that we don't need this conditional use permit. That's why they did not notify everybody in the beginning, because they were told that it would be approved, you know? So that's why we were at, I mean, we did not notify in public. I mean, we don't publicize everything that we do, you know? We don't put it in the paper that we're selling this place. That'll hurt my business, immediate business also. And as is, we were supposed to close on June 1st, but since it's extended, I'm losing a lot of money because I've canceled a lot of reservations for June also. And I would like to see this happen as quickly as possible because we've canceled a lot of our reservations. And the location right now for a hotel is not a thriving location because of the interchange. We don't have a direct access anymore. People have to drive around. Every customer that comes through here, they tell us that, you know, it is very hard to get to this place. Some people say, I didn't know you guys existed here, you know? Still, even with all the signage that we're paying for and everything, it's not a viable option right now as a hotel. So I urge you, Cannon Falls community, accept the new owners and welcome the Recovery Center here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Do you have anyone else on?
She's with them.
So it looks like we'll close the public hearing yet. Okay, I'd like to, we'll close the public hearing with no other input here, and we'll move into discussion here a little bit. Are there anybody opposed to that?
Sure. Can I go first? I'll ask the question that's kind of been brought up and whoever feels like answering, it doesn't really matter. It appears a year and a half ago, you were looking into Red Wing. I'm just wondering what happened there that it didn't work out? And then when you decided to look into Cannon, why wouldn't you have talked to the neighbors? Just seems like that's kind of the neighborly thing to do.
Yep. Hi, I'm Matia McGuire. I am Jacob's wife. I'm also the marketing person as well for Valley View Recovery Center, and I am the one that made the website, and I've just been playing with it for the last six months, so that's what you've seen. I am also a sister, a mother of a one-year-old, a seven-year-old, a property owner in Red Wing, and taxpayer in this community, and a business owner as well in Red Wing. We did start out in Red Wing as there was a need in Goodhue County. Come to find out, you cannot open a treatment facility in a residential location or in a business district in the city of Red Wing, and you have to go in a residential district. And we were trying to purchase a school that was up for an RFP, and they did choose someone else as the investor. The community just decided, or actually a school board decided on a different investor. That's how, that's what happened with that. And I do want to touch on the part of not coming to the community first. In discussion with Babash, he did feel like it would hurt his business if we were to go around town talking to community members, and I think that's fair to him, as well as we did go to the zoning department in December and January, and we're told that it was approved in that, without conditions, and therefore we didn't have to go through this process. And so it's not that we were trying to be deceitful in any way. That is not the type of people we are. So as soon as we found out that we do need to do this process because now that we're going to be considered a hospital, we immediately drove to Cannon Falls and started knocking on people's doors the next day.
You're, if I, I'm Bruce Hamer here. As I understand it, you're licensed by the state Minnesota Department of Health and Department of Human Services. Is that where you receive your licensing?
Yes.
Correct.
For the facility?
Yep.
Have you started that procedure?
It is complete. We are ready to close and open. We've been doing this for months.
Now, I understood just through a little research that they are required to notify the community when they begin.
Correct.
Did they?
Well, we haven't closed, so we can't open.
I'm talking about the permit. You can't sign up, they haven't signed off on the permit yet.
We have, we have approval from the Goodhue County for the permit.
No, I'm talking about the state.
The state will not issue our license until we own the property.
Have you applied for the license yet?
Yes.
Yes, and we've had.
And the state is required to let the community know.
No.
That, yes, they are.
After you're open.
They have 30.
When you begin the process, within 30 days, or they have to let us know, 30 days.
They let you know 30 days after the They let you know 30 days after the license is approved.
So it's not approved.
No, we can't get technically approved until we own the property. So everything's ready to go and they're all ready to say, now you're licensed, but we have to own the property first.
So I'm a little confused. Doesn't the state have to also, or the Department of Human Services have to physically inspect the facility?
We've had food pool and lodging. We've had Department of Labor and Industry code analysis.
But they don't issue the certificate?
They are, none of them will issue, actually issue the certificate until you own the property.
So do you know that this facility will meet their needs?
Yes, we've passed on all of them. We have correction orders that have been taken care of from food pool and lodging, the Department of Labor and Industry code analysis for the building permit to the building inspection, through our supervised living facility license, through Department of Health. They give you a correction order and say what you need to take care of. It's all been extremely minimal because this property already has a food license, it already has lodging license. Those are very similar to like a supervised living facility. So our main big, biggest licenses are a 245G license through Department of Human Services. That's a months-long revisions of policies and procedures. We have a policy and procedures manual, close to 500 pages long with a, and none of this can be granted, not even a lodging license, until you own the property.
And that's kind of the issue here is you have to go through all these hoops, knowing that eventually this community is going to know after the fact. Is that what you're saying?
The very first thing we did in our process when planning this business was contact zoning. Very first thing, I would...
Contact who?
Say that again.
Who did you contact?
The zoning department.
The zoning department here in Cannon Falls?
Back in Cannon Falls, we contacted, the very first thing we did, Bhavesh called us and said, hey, I have this building for sale. The next day or two later, we went and looked at it. After leaving there, we started contacting Cannon Falls zoning, the very first thing that we ever did in any of this process. I contacted them a day or two later. They, we went through our whole business use, stating that we're going to be a rehabilitation center.
Right, yeah.
Residential rehabilitation center. She contact, the zoning technician contacts the city attorney. The city attorney and her, she's, we were told that we're permitted as office clinical and a B2 zoning. This is, this is in December, I believe. And then so I contacted them.
Do we know that, do we have anybody from the city?
We have an email actually with Diane.
The last you have an email?
The very last piece in my business plan proposal is the email, which is actually about our fourth or fifth communication about this because we usually would need a conditional use to operate, but the other facility, residential facility that we do own is in Winona and that city is zoned to operate without conditional use. So yes, it would be, majority of treatment centers do require conditional use. So I was kind of flabbergasted when I was told that it was permitted. So, but I do own another facility that it was not a need. And we do know all the neighbors, which I have given you references from the next-door neighbor in my Winona facility, the neighbor across the street, neighbor two houses down. Most of them have kids, most of them walk directly past our property to go to school every day and they sent you reference letters in support of us.
Okay, so, so yeah, you've been working on this a long time.
Since December.
But yet, yet the city didn't know about it because you were worried about the owner losing business.
The city did know about it.
City did know about it.
Yes, zoning department and the city attorney knew about it.
Okay. So the other questions, it seems to be the big issues are security. You mentioned security systems very quickly. And I, don't get me wrong, I think the, you know, it's a well-needed facility in Good Hugh County. Don't get me wrong on this. But the problem is that because it doesn't, it wasn't upfront initially, people just right away get their hackles up and say, what's going on? What are you trying to slip by us here? It's that simple. People feel that way. They don't know anything about your facility and I'm sure it's wonderful, but their biggest thing when they hear about what it is, is they're worried about their security. Now, that seems to be one of the issues that keeps coming up here. And that, and I don't see anything on your plan for any other security other than the passive security you have within the facility.
Yep. So we discussed about having 24/7 supervision. There's multiple techs on it any given time. They, also there's dingers on the doors, on certain doors, all the doors and on the windows on the main floor to notify if anyone were to walk out, correct? And we would obviously respond to that immediately, okay?
Sure. I know, but immediately, and I can run 100 yards in about half an hour, but you know, someone can move pretty fast in that short period of time.
Our doors are locked at night.
I understand that. Your doors and windows on the lower levels are all secured? I don't think you can, can you?
No, we don't, we don't secure them. So the doors are locked at night, except for you can push, in case of a fire, you can push to get out.
What's your experience been with people just deciding to head out? You just let them go?
Well, yeah, you, we can't hold them down if they want to leave.
I know physically you can't.
Yeah. Our goal is if someone wants to leave, we will contact someone that is able to come pick them up at an appropriate time or assist them to where they want to go. We do have medical transporters on staff as well that could bring them to where they're looking to...
That's not the question. Question is, what if they just decide to go without asking permission? They can go, right?
Yes, it's not a locked facility.
Correct.
What?
It's not a locked facility.
Yeah, we...
No, it's not a locked facility. I think that's one of the, one of the unknowns here.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, please do.
Do you want me to go to the microphone?
Yeah, please do. Okay, and your name again is?
Yeah, so my name is Andrea Tajee and like I said, I am a resident of Cannon Falls. So I just want to speak on that security point. The first thing I want to say is I understand the concerns. Again, I am a mom too and if you don't know about these types of programs, you are doing what's in your best interest to take care of your family. I 100% support that. What I will say on that security end, you know, we're talking about hypotheticals with family members. I also just really quickly, before I get to my point, want to touch on the fact that I think it's important for us to think about our current children that are struggling with addicted family members.
I don't disagree with all of the issues society has.
The security piece...
I'm just talking about security.
So in my experience at that residential treatment program that I worked at, it was in a residential area. It was also considered high intensity. We did not have locks on doors. We did not have alarms, anything like that. And again, there were no instances of the public at risk at all. There was actually a apartment complex with people that were actively using close by and those people were the ones that were frequently getting, being seen taking things from other people, local people, things like that, the people that aren't receiving that care. So I think it's important to know, in my experience of a program that didn't have all these restrictions in place, people could go on pass any time in their free time outside of treatment, which was about half as much programming as we'll have in this location. There, in all of that time, not a single instance of where the public was ever at risk or their property.
That doesn't answer the question of if they decide to go, they'll just go.
I think there really isn't an answer for your question because there's just, it's very hypothetical and I don't know how to answer that.
Well, we want to know if our police system will be affected and if, you know, we'll have to pay more money for police. Is this, is this an issue with...
What I've seen of the public report, police reports around Cannon Falls is 25% of, if not more, and 25% of the police calls are to businesses. Yes, we would be using the police force. I have been trying to get in contact with them. They said I needed to set up a meeting through the city hall. So I have been trying to talk to them. The police would get involved, definitely. If we need to use 911 and someone is acting more so irrational, not rationally leaving, like I'm going to leave and get in the car and, but if they're, if they're intent, if they're kind of, their attitude is amplified, yes, we will definitely be getting a hold of 911, their probation officers immediately.
I don't think there's any difference between what these folks are planning than someone walking out of a hospital or any other facility. Well, I agree. You can't stop them. I agree. I just want to know if there's a system in place or one that's planned.
We have, we have a lot of emergency procedures, if that's what you're asking about with how, exactly how, you write on a piece of paper. You could be on your first day on the job as a behavioral health technician, someone supervising clients, exactly down a list tells you exactly what to do. But those licenses through the state that you're talking about, we need to have this extremely well-planned out.
But you won't be able to sign a purchase agreement until the state physically signs you off?
No, opposite way.
The state...
The state will not give me a license if someone else owns the property. They will not give me a lodging license while there's already lodging license on...
They won't even inspect to see if the facility...
They already have, we've already done all inspections. We've already passed all licenses.
The Department of Human Services has inspected the facility?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Then I do, then thank you. Maybe I just didn't hear it right the first time. Yeah, if I'm understanding it correctly, you guys need the council to do a conditional use permit. That will then allow you to buy the Saratoga and then at that point, the state can come and give you your...
Correct.
All the appropriate things and then you can open.
Yes.
Okay. I want to go back in history a little bit here. There was some talk about the interchange and how that affected some stuff. For those of us that remember it, originally there was supposed to be an interchange there on 24. For whatever reason, MINDOT decided, oh, we're not going to do it, even though they promised us that. So just, just an FYI. You don't want to go there. Yeah, well, okay. I have to say, the rollout probably wasn't done very well. So that was unfortunate. Now the hard questions, as I researched some of this, a few of you folks were involved with a group, Common Ground.
Yes, we, we're owners of Common Ground.
And I have lists of violations, most of which are not very good record-keeping, let's put it that way. What is the, how can you assure us that this will not be a problem here?
Yeah, actually, Common Ground itself and not Common Ground Recovery Housing, I own on my own. And so that really is not effective of what Jacob is opening here. However, those were, we do have a new licensor who is very, very, very strict, the strictest that we've ever had. And so a lot of that is coming from, those violations are coming from little things that are found to not be in compliance. And then obviously, because we have a really good licensor, we have all those things in place now to not have those issues. A lot of it is record-keeping such as client did not sign this weekly progress report. We now have electronic health records, which is a lot easier to do those type of things, so.
Right, because I, you know, I got a boatload of violations here and like I said, most of them involve the paperwork.
Can I jump in on that real quick, Bill?
Sure.
There's also one from 2017 that is from June of 17 where your license was revoked. The commission, the commissioner determined that you pose an imminent risk to the harm of persons served by the chemical dependency treatment service programs. And that's Common Ground with Matia, Matia?
Yep, Matia, yes.
Just question, yeah, your comments on that.
Yes, so what happens in that situation is I'm a person in long-term recovery. I have almost 13 years sober myself and I have an active criminal record from quite a few years ago. And what happened at one point is my variance for my background study to be approved lapsed and therefore what, then I therefore can't operate a facility. And then it got fixed and so that's why we're, yep.
No, that, no, that's quite all right. It was a good question. Of the employees, and I read the breakdown in our packet of how many you hope to hire, how many of them are coming from the Common Ground groups? I believe, Andrea, you said you were elsewhere.
Yep, I'm from a different...
Right.
Was as I'm now unemployed, but yes.
Right, I get that, but...
We have two employees coming from Common Ground and then the rest are from...
Wherever.
Wherever, yep.
Okay, now I know, talked about security. If I understand your procedures, if a patient is going to go outside because they want to have a cigarette or something like that, a staff member will always be accompanying them.
That is correct. And men and women have different hourly smoke breaks, if you want to put it that way. So even hours, women get to go out and smoke and this is all happening in the back in one area. And then on out hours, men can go out and it's supervised.
Okay. I have to say, I don't know what happens to a person who's gone through, whether it's drug or alcohol abuse. I can't speak to that directly. But I have directly in my life seen a family member have to go through that and I know what kind of damage that can do to the family unit and that kind of thing. So I, I'm very passionate about having something like this in our, our community. I, I understand from the Peterson family, some of their concerns, but Ray mentioned that we can't keep pushing things off to somewhere else because somebody doesn't want it in our neighborhood. So I'm actually very much in favor of doing this as long as you guys hold up your end of the bargain, which of course, we won't know until over time. But I believe it was mentioned earlier, Erica, the second chance, and that's what I'd like to, to give you, give you guys and hopefully your rollout from this point forward, assuming the council ultimately, this is just the planning commission will recommend. The council does not have to go along with our recommendation. They can go whatever route. But, but I thank you for bringing this forward. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, our job is to make sure you dot your i's and cross your t's here. And I, and so the facility is an important part of what we look at. And I am a little concerned with the facility, that it meets your needs. You said you had a food permit?
We've had food, lodging, Department of Labor, Industry with a, with a state certified code analysis.
I was just asking about food, I believe.
Just food or are you asking about, you're talking about the whole facility?
I'm asking about the facility handling food in that facility. And then the other question prior to that was, you're going to be dealing with people coming out of all kinds of just really odd situations, I imagine. I can, I can imagine, actually. I didn't see a dietitian on your staff.
Actually, we will have a, I believe it's called a minimal food license.
A what?
Like a minimal or a limited food license, category one. Little Oscars has contracted catering three meals a day, 24, or 365 days a week or a year. And dishwashing. And dishwashing and...
So you guys do physical, mental addiction, but, but not, you don't have a dietitian? You see what I mean? I'm just looking at the whole package. It seems like you're missing something with that facility. It doesn't have any way for you to, it doesn't have a kitchen, does it?
No.
It has a small kitchen, actually, that we, that's how you... It has a small kitchen, actually, that we, that's how you can have a category one food license.
How does, how does the Department of Human Services feel about that when you've got 54 people in a little tiny kitchen and catered meals? Is that serving, is that building able to deal with this?
Yeah, we've gone through all the inspections and shown them where the catering will be, how it's going to be set up, the size of the rooms that the, the clients will be in, the tables, the chairs, how everything is going to be. And also, a lot of places actually have their food catered because we're not in the business of food.
You've got 54 people.
Mm-hmm. And Little Oscars is very happy.
And staff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we would provide, we would provide food for our staff and for the clients three times a day. Little Oscars will actually serve the food out of what, right now, is like a food service area for like cereal and milk. We will be put in...
And I got all that. What I'm saying is, you are going to have 54 people with a variety of, of different dietary...
Well, I see what you're saying.
Needs and the physical dietary needs. They might be diabetic or worse. You know, these kinds of things that they've gotten into have hurt them physically, and they may need to have very specific kinds of diets. I don't think, you know, a good roast beef dinner every day is going to do the job.
Yeah. Little Oscars is not doing their normal food, just so you know. It is a laid-out menu that is approved by the Department of Health, and we need to have a dietitian that reviews it. Yep.
That's what I was asking, if you're going to have a dietitian.
Did you look into putting a kitchen in?
We have, but that would delay our process a long time. Yeah.
So, we have an agreement with Department of Health Food Division. We have an agreement to put in, within six months, to do dishwashing on-site. We would not be able to operate if you didn't have a caterer. So, having that caterer is key to getting through the licensing process and not having, having renovations get in the middle of your licensing. Once we're licensed, then yes, we can start doing build-outs that will help, help suit our needs even more.
Our goal, our goal, though, would is to help the community also. And Little Oscars is super excited to be, I mean, they're struggling, and this is going to be a huge asset for them to be able to, I mean, she's went out and bought things already. She's hired a person that does catering as her previous job, and she has extensive experience doing it.
I got all this, too. What I'm seeing is, you're, you're tending to jump ahead sometimes to things that I don't feel comfortable with. The facility itself does not have a commercial kitchen or dishwashing facility. Is that correct?
Correct, and we don't need that.
And you're going to, are you going to subcontract all that out?
To Little Oscars.
The cleaning, too?
Correct.
We have, we have a housekeeper of twenty, that's on staff, full-time.
One housekeeper for 54 people?
We have one housekeeper on staff, correct? And then, I mean, the clients have to clean their own rooms. Our housekeeper does not...
And how about your laundry facility? Does that, that handles all of that already?
So, there's, there's 25, there's 25 bedrooms. If you're going to clean, you've got five days a week, that's five bedrooms a day. It's, you know, and, and we are going to start out with male-only clients for the first two to three months. We're going to start out with about 25 clients for a month, month and a half, and then after that time, go into more, up to 30, 34 male clients. So, as we, as we expand and grow, we do need to find where, if we need two housekeepers, you know, and part of this conditional use process is putting conditions on us.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm open to hearing what conditions that you think are appropriate.
Do you believe that the Department of Human Services will license you without a commercial kitchen?
Yes.
I, I already know they will.
Yeah, they...
You already know they will?
Yes, they've told me.
I haven't seen one thing from them in, in all of this paperwork.
Department of Human Services...
Not one bit of information from them. You need to provide us...
Minnesota...
He didn't know what's going on, you know?
The Department of Health is actually the one that licensed...
The Department of Health, yes.
Department of Human Services has nothing to do with the food.
Don't they license you?
No, not with food. They license us for treatment services.
That's, that's okay. Got that. Okay, so there's, the government's interesting, isn't it?
We have, we're very highly regulated.
We've, we've been through, we've been through over 10 state inspections and with minimal corrections needed on all of them. That's why we...
In this facility?
That's why we picked that building.
And we don't see any of that here. You didn't provide us with any of that information. I think you need to do that.
Yeah, I can provide my inspection...
And then I feel, I would feel comfortable then, knowing that what you're saying is going to work out with the state.
I can provide you signed inspection sheets by lodging, food, yeah.
That's, that's something we can always add if we're going to approve it as an additional condition to provide us with all the paperwork for all the...
For a hospital.
Am I fair in asking? I don't want to be unfair here. I just want to, this is, this is a big deal for you and it's a big deal for us, too.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to get licensed without the license.
But we need to, we need, you know, to see that.
You can send whatever you need.
Our, our use classification as a hospital, part of the city ordinance or city zoning is for us to acquire that. And, and because we're a state-licensed facility, we have to acquire that and follow those, everything from the state strictly. So, we have conditions over ourselves. We're audited on a regular basis by the food, by the Department of Human Services, all these state regulations, and also conditional use through the city also.
So, where were you talking about like equine services and your trails and stuff? Are you going to bus, bus them someplace?
So, we do plan on getting some large vehicles to be able to transport smaller-type groups at a time to, say, Mont Cheval to do training courses. The neat thing is, is that they have a trainer right now that's just finishing up with her master's degree in equine therapy, and it's going to work out really well. The trails, we meant as in, we can bring, we have small groups that happen twice a day, and those are about eight clients per group. And we could bring them to, say, Cannon Valley Trail and go on a walk, things like that. That's what the trail walks and are talking about.
We're not going to be walking in the woods, in the back.
Yeah.
Anybody else, anyone else?
Bruce?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to touch a little bit on, on the urgency of this. I wasn't here when the first initial call came in, but thanks to Diane, she takes great notes. And in your packet, you'll find what went on and how it went down. And on 11/19, she received a call from Matea about the Saratoga.
Is this a packet I just received when I walked in?
Yeah, you'll, no, it'll be part of your other packet, but it, it was in there. And it says they may want to open a drug and alcohol counseling center there in the Saratoga. She said it would be a clinic, not a hospital facility. So, there, there it starts, okay?
Yeah.
She referred this to Dave Maroni, the last city administrator. And per Dave, he contacted Roger Knutson, our city attorney. Roger said that if it was a clinic facility, it would be a permitted use in a B2 zone, okay?
Right.
Dave asked that she be called and given this information along with a request for a business plan. Now, this is back in November. Diane called Matea and relayed Roger's recommendation and informed her that Dave would need a formal business plan before proceeding. Now, when we got the business plan, two weeks ago? Two weeks ago.
I see it said January on the plan that I got, but you didn't get it until...
We got it two weeks ago, excuse me.
Okay.
Matea said that she's, that they're not sure if they would be pursuing, pursuing this venture yet. Diane sent her an email, reiterating the phone conversation. I can read you the email. When they talk about that they got the okay. And it says, "Thank you for call, for your call this morning, for our previous conversation. Let you know the recommendation from our city attorney. This property is Zone B2. Our attorney felt that will, that the best fit for the rehab complex, complex that you are proposing would be under 152 dot 646G, an official business clinical." Now, we're still talking about a clinic.
Yep.
That, this classification would be a permitted use. "If you move forward, please keep us informed of your plans so we can continue to be sure that you fit within the confines of our city ordinance. Looking forward to the possibility of working with you on this project."
Okay.
Just wanted to make that clear because it seemed a little bit like we were being...
Yeah, that's what I tend to feel is we're...
So, that's where it starts.
Just jumping ahead before all of the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. I'm sorry you feel, you know, I feel that way because I think what you're doing is great. But this, we just, at least personally, I feel like it's just a little bit off yet. And feels like that we need to look at this a little differently, in the sense that we might be not seeing something yet. We haven't seen these inspections.
As far as the clients themselves, approximately, how long do they stay there? And are these people that are court-ordered? Do they come on their own? Is it kind of some of both?
Yeah, we see a, both clients, clientele, especially with an upper-class type facility like this. I think we'll see a lot of private pay insurance clients that are coming. There's not many facilities that offer the type of things that we do unless you're talking of going to Hazelton. So, I think we will see a lot of that. However, we will, we don't discriminate if someone wants to come and they're homeless. Even if someone is court-ordered, which may, it's not like it just comes from a judge that's court-ordered. Maybe their probation officer says, "Hey, I think you should go get a substance use assessment and follow recommendations." Whatever path leads them there, we normally say, see probably 90%, if not more, of those clients excited to be there. Even if, when they're using, they don't want to be there, but when they get there, they're not using, they're excited. They get to see their family, their, their significant other who's been holding their children against them for the last few months because their use has gotten heavier, whatever it might be. Now, they get to have a, a setting where it is structured, it is supervised, and they get to have some reunification time with their family. So, we do see a combination of both.
And how long does, would the average person stay?
Yeah, so we say the clientele is 30 to 90 days. But I would say a most, the best outcome for client outcomes is the longer the better. So, 90 days, we try to see if clients are willing to stay for the 90 days or require the 90 days. But some aren't at that point and might be recommended 30 days. Yep. It all depends on what their recommendation says and their progress during treatment. If someone was recommended to do a 30-day program, but during their second week or first week in the program, we're like, "Ew, that counselor must not have seen what we're seeing now," then we would extend their stay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, with that being the case, then we'll close up the public hearings and the discussion items and move to the Resolution 202001, conditional use permit for Valley View Recovery Center. Bill, did you have an idea?
Well, what I was thinking is that we would accept what we, what we have in front of us as 202001 and add in, and we need all the additional paperwork that we have been talking about with all the, the different items that were mentioned. And then, I think that would cover...
Do we want to table it?
Yeah, we need all the inspection pa, what's that?
Well, we got to remember, we're, we're at the chicken and egg thing here. They can't do this unless this happens.
Yeah, I got that.
So, are we going to delay them another month? You know, I'd, I'd rather not do that.
You said you've got all the inspection stuff done? So, we'd need to have that.
Well, you can't get it till they own the property.
Right, that's why, that's why I would add to this. They cannot move forward until we get all that paperwork as, as part, added on to this resolution.
Okay, so you want to...
How soon could you have that, that paperwork to, we have a council meeting a week from tomorrow.
So, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I am making a motion that we approve Resolution 202001 with the addition that we receive all the paperwork to date regarding all the different items that we've gone through. And can we have that before even maybe the end of this week so it can go out with our council packets?
We'll have it no later than Friday. I mean, we could send it tomorrow. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
What is the paperwork?
I can't, I didn't hear you. What did you say?
We'll have it no later than Friday.
The paperwork would be here by Friday.
Okay. Sorry, can't hear.
What is the specific paperwork that we want them to give us?
Well, the inspections, all those items...
Facility inspections and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Plus, so what, go ahead with your motion then.
Well, I, I did it with a, make a motion to approve Resolution 202001, conditional use permit for Valley View Recovery Center with the added statement that they need to include all the paperwork regarding inspections, et cetera, et cetera, and to be given to us. And then they can...
What's that, John? What does the city need that for?
I have a, I have a hearing need that went dead here, so you're going to...
Bear in mind that we, as a planning commission, are only making a recommendation to the council. If we can get that additional paperwork for our next meeting...
Yeah.
Then we can make a, a slightly better informed decision.
We could also send it to the council with no recommendation as well.
Yeah, you can, you can do that also. And, and bear in mind, for, for you folks, regardless of what's decided here tonight, the earliest we can approve it, of course, is next Tuesday night. That's the earliest, depending on what happens. But anyway, I put that motion out there.
Okay, Bill's made the motion. You all heard it?
I just, I just have a question. Why, why does the city need that? The state approves it all.
Why does the city need the information?
Yeah.
To, well, we need, we need to know that the facility can deal with what they want it for.
As a, as a...
They've already had all the approvals.
Right, but as...
But we haven't seen any of it.
But as Ron Reagan said, "Trust, but verify." This is just to be a verification.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of Bill's motion?
There wasn't a second.
Write it down?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been...
Moved and seconded.
And Derek seconded it, so...
Glenn did.
Oh, Glenn seconded it. Okay. So, so we'll go ahead and go from there with that...
Oh, we got to vote.
Yeah. And all opposed, or all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed?
No.
One no? Is that here a no?
There was one no.
Okay. So, we're three and one. So, the...
One, okay.
I'm, I'm okay with it. And so, the resolution is approved with the agenda to it.
Bruce, I have a question.
Yeah.
A conditional use permit implies you can put any conditions on it if you want. If this was next door to each one of you, what conditions would you put on other than the state inspection?
Yeah. We need to see the conditions that they need to be able to...
No, I'm just saying for your personal well-being, what conditions would you put on it if it was next door to you?
I would make it a gated community.
Okay, well, that's exactly what I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah. And that might be something that the council might have to consider. That's just a little over our head.
Yeah, the whole council's going to, but I understand why we want to see the paperwork.
Yeah, we got to have all of our stuff... Yeah, we got to have all of our stuff in order, and then, the council, and believe me, this is probably a small crowd compared to what'll show up for the council meeting, they will have the ultimate approval or disapproval. So, if there's anything more that, based on our discussions today, you feel you can present to the council, why give it a shot then? I don't think we'll get it back here. We're all done.
Yeah, for now, yeah.
You could recommend to the council other conditions, that's all I'm saying.
Well, and, and, and Dick, on, on Tuesday, the council, uh, could decide to add additional things if they so desired.
Absolutely, and so could you.
Right. So...
Any more discussion here before we adjourn?
No, I, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made to adjourn by Bill and seconded by Derek. Thank you very much, everybody, and best luck to everybody on this one.